I'd like to call the meeting to order for silent reflection and pledge of allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Chair. Mrs. Cindy?
Here.
Mr. Diver?
Here.
Mrs. King?
Here.
Mr. McLean?
Here.
Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Borbach?
Here.
Mayor Mecanico?
Here.
For so it to require us of New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act, notice of this meeting was included in the annual meeting notice posted on the borough website and in the municipal building and published as a legal notice in the Coe Star newspaper. Need a motion to approve the agenda and a second?
I'll make that motion.
You have a second?
Yes.
Any questions? Roll call please, Chair. Mrs. Cindy?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borbach?
Yes.
No presentations at this time. Those scheduled public hearings, first voice in public, where the public may step forward and speak about any agenda item. Step forward and give your name and address, please.
Good evening, Miss. My name is Richard Cornitz, and I'm also here with my wife, Maureen Cornitz. And 35 years ago, we purchased a house at 5th and 6th Avenue in Spring Lake Heights. And years ago, five years ago, rather, we purchased a house next to the 3rd and 6th Avenue in Spring Lake Heights. And I'm here tonight to thank Mayor, Mayor Mecanico, Jay Delaney, and Joe May for bringing forward to your attention the draft resolution on elevating buildings in flood zone. What I'd like to speak to you about is how my house at 3rd and 6th Avenue was flooded with Hurricane Irene last time, and the water came right through the house. Whereas the house at 5th and 6th Avenue, which we raised 10 years ago, we got permission from the town to raise it 10 years ago, flood did not go through there, it just went through underneath. So I appreciate the effort that's being put in to try to get this resolution passed to help us as homeowners down here. And I do have photos to show you the damage that was done by Hurricane Irene. Okay, photo number one shows the house at 3rd and 6th Avenue that I purchased about five years ago. And that shows Hurricane Irene on the day we came down after, the water was receding at this time on photo number one. We're looking at Shore Road and Reg Potton, and that 6th Avenue on the left would be the stop sign. Photo number two shows our house at 3rd and 6th Avenue and the house that was raised 10 years ago at 5th and 6th Avenue. So you can see the difference, how the water did not get the insides of the house at 5th and 6th Avenue, but it did go right through 3rd and 6th Avenue. The only thing we have underneath the house at 5th and 6th Avenue is storage items. So the water went through there, but nothing was damaged because of the... The house was put up at 5, according to FEMA standards, at all the elevations and the proper elevations and everything else. And photo number three shows the water in the house that's receding at that time. But it wasn't a pleasant sight when we came down to see it walk through there and take pictures, so. And then photo number four, this is a visual at the park across the street from us with the waters, a photo from our front porch looking out. So what I would hope that the draft resolution would do enable us to raise the house to meet FEMA standards and whatever Joe May, the building inspector, says we should raise it to, we certainly want to conform, and that's why I want to seek the building permit. And the reason we're looking for the building permit is FEMA, I have a possibility of getting a FEMA loan and working with FEMA. FEMA was down to look at the house, and they said, yes, we'll give you a loan to the house. And also, I have Wells Fargo, who I have a mortgage with. There, I have to be every month to make repairs. I can't make repairs unless I get the building permit, and that's what this resolution looks like it would do. So if this ordinance is passed, I'd be able to make the repairs to the house. I already have Spring Lake Heights contractors lined up to do the work. I've used it before, and I'd like to use it again with the same operation. So I'd like to thank you for your consideration of this ordinance, perhaps I could avoid any floods in the future when Reg Potton floods. Yes?
Yeah, I'd like to support you when you add "thank". You said that the house number five was elevated about 10 years ago?
Yes, when the northeast it came through.
So why the need for your ordinance? What's motivating you to seek an ordinance?
Because when I spoke to the building inspector, he indicated he couldn't give me the approval at the present time.
Because of our... The way our ordinance is...
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay, I see.
Okay, but now he's going forward, he sees what's happening here, and he's trying to help me along with FEMA.
Yeah, I read it, and it looks like a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it, okay. Okay, fine, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Any... Any agenda?
A agenda, I'm all right, I'm also in.
Anyone else?
I can't hear what they're saying.
Make a motion to close the first person's call.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, this is discussion items, submitted, Peter, draft ordinance Mr. Cornitz just explained to us.
Mayor, just, you'll note that Mr. May is in attendance, I had a question that he joins, in case there are any questions on the technical aspects of this ordinance. By way of background, Mr. Cornitz has provided a specific example of the rationale behind it. I would point out that this is similar to an ordinance that was adopted in the borough of Spring Lake last year, and would provide some relief for those properties that are, you know, particularly impacted because of the flood zone and the regulations I think will apply.
Joe?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. This ordinance was drafted...
Excuse me, Mayor, just so the record's clear, if Mr. May could use one of the microphones?
Sure, I'll have all of it. This ordinance was drafted specifically for some of the homes in that area that were not important. Reason Mr. Cornitz could not get a building permit was it's not performing structure we have from the board.
Excuse me?
We have from the board, it's not performing structure, that's why.
Oh, so in other words, this ordinance allowed him just simply to go ahead and make these changes to his property, not having to get a variance or the zoning board?
Exactly. As agreed in item B, existing non-important building for existing building on our front block, that's what allows...
Right, I understand, yeah.
Basically, with bumbles and the homes of that nature to be raised up on the floor.
But he'd still have to work through you?
Um, no, he would not, he would just build the rent.
Just to...
Yep. And you can see here that we allow four feet, and we go from 32 to 35. And the reason there's a difference is because typically you build one foot above flood, so that takes away from the four feet, so it's left with three feet, so it wasn't 35. Looking at houses, there are very few that would meet the various criteria, 35 feet in that area, and four years. Basically, bumbles, ranges, one against three houses are very small, so I don't see any that would meet this criteria, and any homes would have to be built at a 32-foot height, but we allow them, of course, to be built out of the foot.
Great, we can run this by the board for us?
Yes. This ordinance, since it does amend the land use section of your code, by way of the state municipal land use law, must be referred at some point, whether you do it prior to introduction, or you introduce it, let's say, this evening, and then you send it to the planning board. One way or the other, it has to go to the planning board, where the planning board's reviewing our recommendation.
Yeah, I mean, I don't object to this at all, this makes sense.
All right, if we introduce it, at least it's introduced, and then you host a planning board, we would go right to a public hearing instead of waiting, again, two more months. I would make a motion to introduce the ordinance.
I'll second that.
Hey, Mayor, welcome to introduction, this would... Will assign ordinance number 13... 13 dash 2012, and this is for introduction.
You said 13, did you mean 12?
I meant 13, because we previously assigned 12 to an ordinance, it's already scheduled for introduction.
Okay.
Rather than confuse me.
So I believe you have a motion and a second. If there's any further discussion, now would be the time, otherwise you can take a roll call.
Yes, it's for... This is benefit to the homeowner, protecting his property, and it doesn't cost him something? It's great.
Hey, need a motion to...
You already have a motion and a second, you can see your roll call vote.
Roll call, I'm sorry. No, you roll called, Chair.
Mrs. Cindy?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borbach?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the public hearing and second reading of this ordinance will be held when?
Depending on its... We'll schedule the public hearing for our meeting of one... Our first... I'm not sure, actually, the planning board won't be meeting this month. I don't believe they have a meeting until the last week of October.
Wednesday.
Yeah, the fourth of Wednesday. So we will schedule this for public hearing at our first meeting event.
Chair?
Yes, Mayor, and the next item...
Is the community rating, TRS?
Yes, and it seemed appropriate, while we're on the subject of flood, to bring this before the council. As you are no doubt aware, the borough participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, and part of that program provides what's called the Community Rating System, which will allow the borough to implement certain items that would afford property owners a reduction in their flood insurance. And I provided as part of the information packet a listing of those New Jersey municipalities and that participate in the Community Rating System, and the discount that those communities receive, and to be precise, the discount that property owners within that community receive on their flood insurance premium. And it would be our intent to initiate contact with the flood insurance program to begin the process. It's usually about a year to submit the required paperwork, undergo the review before it would be effective.
That's a great idea, Chair.
Okay, for Jay, you move forward, Hunter?
Yeah, at some point, once we prepare the actual application, we come back to the council for formal authorization to submit, but again, just by way of discussion, to provide the council with background, let you know it's something we'll be working on.
That's great. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Committee of Records, Councilman Schuler.
The work at the ball field, the little league, just about completed now, it's about 99%. Should be completed very shortly. The painting of the community center is taking place. It's about half done now, depending on the weather, it should be done in a couple days.
Thank you.
How we do it?
Nothing at this time. Not the woman... Nothing at this time. Not the woman... Cindy? That's her name. Okay. Councilman McLean?
Nothing.
Thank you. New business. We have ordinance number 12 dash 2012, should we?
Yes, Mayor, this is ordinance number 12 dash 2012, an ordinance amending ordinance number 09-2012, entitled Capital Ordinance of the Borough of Spring Lake Heights in the County of Monmouth, New Jersey, authorizing various purchases and improvements to public facilities and appropriating therefore the sum of $90,000. By way of background, ordinance 09-2012 was adopted earlier this year and provided a funding authorization in the amount of $90,000 for capital improvements. Specifically, those capital improvements were outlined as the installation of signs and message boards, as well as recreation facility improvements. As I think you're all aware, we have completed the installation of the message board at the school. The original intent was to perhaps install two such signs, single-sided signs, and it was the committee's final determination to go with a single, two-sided sign at the school, which we are using in cooperation with the school district. As a result, we have what I would call available funding from that portion of the ordinance, and the Recreation Committee has requested that those available funds be reallocated for additional recreation improvements, specifically for the community center. We've identified the replacement of the fence around the playground, as well as some renovations to the rear of the community center, specifically the removal and elimination of the exterior stairwell that leads into the basement. We've encountered some water issues there, and it's felt that the elimination of that would prolong the building and be an improvement.
It is recovery cost.
Correct, and again, these funds have already been appropriated, so we're not talking about any new money, it's reallocating the funds that were previously allocated.
Need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions? Roll call, Chair. Mrs. Cindy?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borbach?
No.
And Mayor, we will schedule that... The hearing on this ordinance for our next meeting. New business. Resolution R 2012 dash 154, authorizing execution separation agreement with Anna Poots.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. What legal obligations do we have as far as to this agreement? I mean, is it a statutory obligation as far as... I mean, it looks to me like this is a severance package.
Yes, I think, to answer your question, as you are no doubt aware, earlier this year, by contract, the borough entered into a shared service agreement with Wall Township for the operation of our court. As part of that, or as a result of that agreement, the municipal court was transferred to Wall Township, and this position of court administrator, as well as a part-time clerical position in the court, both of those positions were eliminated. This separation agreement would preclude any additional litigation between the parties, and does provide for payment of all accumulated sick vacation time and any type of, for lack of a better word, severance package, as you indicated. To conclude this matter, as you are aware, the position that was eliminated was a tenured court administrator position, and this eliminates any further discussion or dispute between the parties on the elimination of that.
It doesn't delineate in the agreement about the tenure. Tenure is not mentioned, and I think that it really prejudice us as a town that if any other position gets eliminated that's not a tenured position, that we're in a position that this sets a very bad precedent, and that we are going to have to possibly pay such a settlement to, I mean, it's not a golden parachute, yeah, it could be construed as a golden parachute.
I would defer to the borough attorney, although I would also mention that this agreement was drafted by our labor council and was specifically intended to cover the borough so that there would be no past practice precedent set for any future positions we may be eliminating.
Yes, and on that point, I would indicate that Tracy Armstrong, the borough's labor council, did draft this agreement on behalf of the borough, and I did have an opportunity to review it. Tracy Armstrong and I both feel confident that it covers the borough and that it's not going to set a precedent for any future agreements.
But Tracy also gave an opinion back a year ago that indicated that we were in our rights to do this, and that basically, nothing was owed. And I have no problem if we are contractually obligated or legally obligated to pay somebody a raise, overtime, severance, but, I mean, this is... This seems to be an agreement much like a severance or a golden parachute, that's what it seems like, so I'm not comfortable with it.
Well, Ms. Armstrong indicated that she felt that the borough had a strong position, and without getting into attorney-client privilege about, you know, to any further degree, about advice that she may have given to you in executive session, the question that Mr. Delaney raised about the fact that this was a tenured position was one that the courts still have not finally resolved. To what degree a shared service agreement will trump the tenured employee's rights? And that's one that there really is no solid case law out there, and the matter could very well be one that would have gone into litigation, and the borough would have expended certain funds relating to litigation costs. As with any settlement, a business decision was made by the council to move forward with this agreement, and I'll just leave it at that.
Chair, Cindy?
Well, I just, you know, I'm going by my record and saying that my understanding is that case law was a tenured employee, it was a... Court clerk. A court... I'm not a court clerk, I'm a borough clerk. And she adjudicated the matter to final conclusion, and it was determined that she was not voted anything. So therefore, we went forward with this merger, because I would not have voted to merge the court if I thought we were going to be obligated to do some type of severance package or golden parachute for somebody, to buy somebody out of a job. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have voted that way. And I just want the... I want the public to be aware of that. I do feel that there's nothing in this agreement that indicates the reason why this agreement is even being discussed is that she's a tenured employee, there's nothing in there. And so if somebody else, for instance, we had a position that we did not reappoint, a borough clerk, could she now have the funds to request a severance because of the fact that we have gone down this road? I'm against it.
From the legal aspect, given the circumstances of the tenured position here, and those that are present in this case, I'm confident, as is Ms. Armstrong, that it cannot be used as precedent against the borough in any future situations.
Deli speaking, where do you want to be the test case? Protects us from being a test case.
That's correct.
Roll call, Chair. Mrs. Cindy?
No.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
I recuse myself.
Mr. McLean?
Abstain.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borbach?
Abstain.
Mayor, the... My records reflect that there were two votes to adopt, one vote against, and three abstentions.
The quorum is three members and the mayor. And what you have here is only three eligible members of the governing body who voted. In a sense, you had three who did not cast a vote. So with three members of the governing body here, three council members and the mayor, a vote of two to one will mean that the matter carries. So this has been approved.
Resolution number 2012, 54, approves. Chair.
Can I...
No more discussion.
No, can I... Fred?
Yes.
Can we... It just doesn't seem like that should be... I thought you had a...
Well, three council members chose not to cast a vote, and basically, that meant that they... Their votes are not counted or considered, it's almost as if they weren't present. That leaves you with three council members who voted, and you have three council members and the mayor, that constitutes a quorum. There's no advance requirement for an agreement like this to have a two-thirds majority. What we're looking at, when you have three council members and the mayor representing the quorum, a simple majority of the three council members and a vote of two to one means that the measure passes.
I distinctly remember you giving a ruling at one time, advice at one time, saying that it was necessary that three votes for something to be approved. I distinctly remember that.
I don't recall what that issue was. I'm happy to take a look at whatever that issue might have been, there might have been some statutory requirement associated with that particular matter, but in this instance, as I indicated, with three council members who are basically not participating, you're left with three council members and the mayor representing your quorum, and you had a vote of two to one, and in my opinion, this measure has passed.
So only two votes, a golden parachute can be passed in this town with six councilors in this... Is it?
Well, three council members chose not to cast a vote.
Six council members present. Chose not to vote.
Two of the three...
No, it's just a travesty of justice that that golden parachute...
It's a travesty that you chose not to vote.
Can be tossed in this town by two people voting for it.
Two of the three council members were recused, given the fact that they had conflicts of interest.
That it should not have been affirmative, Fred. That should not be affirmative.
Well, this matter was discussed in executive sessions on two occasions, and had there been any concern that was...
Doesn't matter when it comes to a vote? It doesn't matter.
Well, any such concerns could have been raised and could have been hashed out during our executive session.
That doesn't matter as a vote. Whatever objections were raised in a closed session does not matter once you get on the dais.
That's absolutely correct, but you chose to do this in a public forum, and that's your choice. I'm giving you my legal opinion that I believe that two to one passes.
I just... I cannot believe that we are passing a golden parachute with two votes. Point of water? Point of water? Mr. Ricetta? Mr. Ricetta, is the majority... My understanding is if people recuse themselves, then that vote automatically goes to the majority?
I'm going based on Robert's Rules of Order, which indicates that it's as if those had votes are not counted and are not considered.
Okay, my understanding of Robert's Rules is it went with the majority.
If you were to conclude that they went with the majority, then my legal ruling would not be disturbed, because the votes would go with the two to one, with the two who voted in the affirmative, and the matter would have passed. So either way, the matter passed, but based upon my reading of Robert's Rules of Order, the two to one vote will suffice.
Thank you. Resolution R 2012 dash 159, when the Ellen Island, the borough representative, to ensure community alliance.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Second, Chair. Any questions? Roll call, please. Mrs. Cindy?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borbach?
Yes.
Resolution R 2012 dash 160, supporting New Jersey Labor Municipalities' effort in the borough of Fort Will versus Verizon. Motion and a second?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any questions? Roll call, Chair. Mrs. Cindy?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borbach?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to move bills in the Finance Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Second? Any questions on those? Roll call, Chair. Mrs. Cindy?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Abstain.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Borbach?
Yes.
Resolution R 2012 dash 161, approving payments on claims for September 21st, 2012 bill list. Motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please. Mrs. Cindy?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Abstain.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Abstain.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Consent resolution, R. twenty-twelve dash one sixty-two, does anyone have a chance to look at the consents?
Yes.
Do you have a motion and a second?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Cindy?
Yes.
Mr. Diver?
Yes.
Mrs. King?
Yes.
Mr. McLean?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Mr. Vorbach?
Yes.
Second voice of the public, you may speak on any thoughts on your mind.
I'd just like to thank the mayor and council.
I'm sorry, name it.
Evelyn Pugello, eight oh seven Park Avenue, I'm the mayor and council for the health fair. I, the mayor and Sarah were there, and I hoped to see the rest of you, but we didn't. And it was, our vendors were good, all were healthy, we give healthy products, we had fruit and stuff, and seniors, and people were allowed to take the food home, they were donated, the cost to the town was zero, I am not submitting any of the bill for the coffee, because I am taking those little good folks home. So it worked out well. I do want to inform you that I have received a call today from Lifeline. We had sixty-two people at Lifeline, we had two people who they caught serious conditions, and they were referred immediately to their doctors. So that in and of itself would help save lives. I will find out from Brittany and tomorrow, and all the parties so far have asked if they can come back again. It's up to the council. I will be doing it next year, but I returned all information over to Catherine today, and I ask that thank you letters be sent to all the vendors, and especially the food stores that did the donations. Okay, thank you.
By the way, Evelyn, I took, I took the opportunity to do the Lifeline.
Oh, good, thank you.
And Mayor, if I may just add, this was my first time here for the health fair, although I was unable to attend, but I'd also just like to offer my personal thanks to Mrs. Pugello for her efforts coordinating with the various departments, you know, she was very instrumental, she's being modest, but certainly the success of the health fair has a lot to do with her participation in organization.
I would just like, if I had pulled it together and been able to set up and do things, Chief Petrickin has been the last two years indispensable in making that come off, just as much as I.
Thank you. Victor, you'd like to say anything about the old shredder after, Mayor?
Rich Carrick, nine sixteen Prospect. In reference to the shredding event held on September fifteenth, we received a report that we accumulated six and a half tons of paper. And I just want to thank everybody that volunteered, council members, members of the public, and the students that we had volunteered, and thanks to the public works and the police, of course, and sorry about all the traffic. Six and a half tons, that was the official report from the county recycling.
We filled the truck, right?
Oh, and we had to cut it off early, no more room.
Thank you very much, Rich.
Also, Elaine Islandberg was great assistance.
Hi, Jennifer Soft, eight hundred Jersey Avenue. I'd like to thank the mayor and council for giving me an opportunity to speak again. Unfortunately, my husband Andrew can't be with us tonight as he's working, and he recused off for Wednesday's planning board meeting, which has been canceled. I'm asking again that you consider granting us a waiver from the current sidewalk requirement. I appreciate the memo, the memo that was sent to the planning board, and I understand that making an amendment to the current ordinance would take time to complete correctly. A huge part of our lives has been on this dance floor since hearing about the sidewalk requirement. We can improve the appearance of our home for ourselves and our neighborhood by installing a curb, landscaping for our property with sod, trees, or putting up a fence for our two small children to play in our backyard without having this issue resolved. In addition, we can't purchase any furniture or other accessories that we put in our new home without knowing we're going to be required to spend twenty to thirty thousand dollars to install a sidewalk in our house in the near future. Now that the ordinance is not going to be reviewed by the planning board until the end of October, the sidewalk issue will most likely not be resolved until post-winter, making our curb landscaping and other outdoor projects postponed till the spring. I believe that coming snow without a curb makes it more difficult for the cloud drivers, as well as making it extremely messy at the base of our property. I would still, of course, come to support the town and amend this ordinance, but I am begging that this matter be resolved on my family tonight, so that we can begin construction on our curb and improving the overall appearance of our property, as well as begin purchasing things that will help our house be more healthy. Thank you for the consideration.
John Lewis, five seventy-four Prospect Avenue, I wanted to speak to you a little about Anna's getting the buyout. Did the council know when they got rid of the court that this is what you'd have to be doing for Anna? Did you know this? I mean, because I don't think the public knew it, and coming from my background in a union, one of the disagreements I have with the governor, and I don't have many, is that he wants to get rid of civil service, which has rules, and the rules are generally first in is the last out. So I didn't understand when Anna, they said the court was leaving, I would have assumed she just would have moved across the hall into the office there, and then had people that were hired after her would have had to be laid off. That seems it would have been the fair, unpolitical thing to do. And I just hope that you haven't opened up a bag of worms here by offering buyouts to people, and it worries me that we have such fine lawyers that we pay good money every year to, yet every time a disgruntled employee drops the lawsuit bomb on us, that we're just scurrying for the shade, you know? I mean, if you're doing the right thing, then let people sue us, and let's take care of it. But if you're doing the wrong thing, then they deserve to get paid. And all I'll say is that Anna should have been moved across the hall and stayed there until she could retire. I don't understand why we need to buy people out of these jobs. Thank you.
And taxpayers' money should not be going for this type of thing.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to close second voice of the public?
I'll second it.
Mayor, before you close the meeting, if I could just briefly mention the fact that I distributed to the council for review, although no formal action is required, a best practices worksheet, and we anticipate that at our first meeting in October, our finance team will be present to discuss this matter, and at that time, we also anticipate providing the council with third quarter financial results for review.
Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.